Good morning. Today is the twenty-sixth day of August. The time is nine o'clock. And the board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Commissioner Daley and myself are present. Commissioner Davidson is also present. Okay. We also have with us, could you identify yourself for the record, starting over here?
Josh Brown, Operations.
Our heart operations.
Cody Smith, Operations.
Good morning, Herb Cantoon, Solid Waste.
John Lake, Perfect.
Tim Sturgis, Clerk's Office.
Tony Starby, Clerk's Office.
Alyssa Ellington, Procurement.
Brad Smith, Assessor's Office.
Timmy Taylor, Assistant Bureau's Office.
And I have IT guy.
Trent Trippell, County Clerk.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Rachel Maugh, Treasure.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not.
Okay, good. We'll take up some unfinished business. First item on the agenda, I'll accept a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table. I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Go ahead, Bob.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. Under unfinished business this morning, procurement has three items. The first of which is bid two-five-zero-six-nine, the rebid of the Ada County Sheriff's Office uniforms. And we have a review of a protest to go over with you. And so we'll take up that matter of the protest first.
Okay.
It's just to kind of recap some of the events leading up to this protest. Procurement received two bids for bid two-five-zero-six-nine. One from Uniforms to Gear and another from Curtis Blue Line. The bids submitted were for percentage of discount from manufacturers' suggested retail price. And the percentage from discount from their MSRP and also a percentage of discount from the alterations was taken into consideration for the total discount. So the percentage of discount itself was multiplied by our multiplier to get to the total estimated savings. Uniform to Gear in their protest letter stated that they wanted confirmation that the contract will be locked in at a proposed discount of twenty-dollar MSRP for each alteration for the duration of the contract. We had contacted Uniforms to Gear and let them know that the twenty-dollar MSRP was an example valuation and it also noted that in the specifications and on the bid form. The actual cost of the alteration may be less than twenty dollars or maybe a little more, but the actual cost of the alter- uh, the actual discount will be applied to whatever that alteration cost is. So what's important is this discount percentage itself. Additionally, in our addendum, it was reiterated that the bid will be awarded to the bidder with the highest total estimated savings and Uniforms to Gear was not the highest. The protest itself seems to be more about confirmation of a twenty-dollar MSRP and less about a substantive defect. The award recommendation was tabled on August nineteenth for further consideration to today's open business meeting. So we are here before you today to take up this matter of the protest and you've had an opportunity to review the protest and whether the protest has merit or not. Based on what Uniforms to Gear have provided in their protest, does the board want to uphold the protest or does the board want to deny the protest?
Okay. Is there any discussion from the board?
Just a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Just to make sure I understand it. So the process we normally use is just a percentage discount, correct?
For this type of RFP, that's what we utilize in order to compare apples to apples, yes.
And so when we used the twenty-dollar figure, it was just an example. It wasn't a percentage, but it's clear understanding that we always use just percentage, right?
Yes, yeah. So that was both in the specifications and reiterated in the addendum as well.
That's the way I review. I just wanted to make sure I understood it based on what I reviewed, what you just said, so, okay. And their protest was they wanted, they thought we should have all handled with the twenty-dollar figure, not the percentage.
That's correct.
Okay, any other discussion? Not all except a motion.
I move.
Go ahead.
I'll move to reject the protest for bid two-five-zero-six-nine, Ada County Sheriff's Office uniforms.
Aye, second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. Now that we have the matter of the protest administered, the evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for bid two-five-zero-six-nine, the rebid of the Ada County Sheriff's Office uniforms. They would like to submit this recommendation award letter for your consideration.
Okay, go ahead. Can you read the letter?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. It's a letter dated August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two-five-zero-six-nine. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two-five-zero-six-nine to L.N. Curtis and Sons Doing Business ads. Curtis Blue Line is the lowest responsive bidder for the following manufacturer and alteration, alteration discount percentages. So the manu- there are several manufacturers here, so. First manufacturer is Five-Eleven and they have a discount of thirty-nine percent. Second is Blackington Manufacturing, they have a discount of thirty percent. Third is Blower with a discount of thirty-six percent. Fourth is Brooks Brothers with a discount of twenty-five percent. Number five is Tat- First Tactical with a discount of thirty-five percent. Number six manufacturer is Flying Cross with a discount of twenty-five percent. Number seven is Port Authority with a discount of thirty-five percent. Number eight is Richardson with a discount of thirty percent. And we have a kind of a pet doll category for all other duty clothing sold by manufacturers not listed. And Curtis Blue Line has a discount of thirty percent for all others. There's also a miscellaneous category for all other uniform accessories sold by manufacturers not listed and also thirty percent. Now for the alterations. Alterations to hem pants, a one-hundred percent discount from Curtis Blue Line. Alteration to taper shirts, fifty percent discount. Alteration to cut shirts, seventy-five percent discount. Alteration to sew-on shirt jacket shoulder patches, eighty percent discount. Alteration to sew-on shirt jacket badge, ninety percent discount. Alteration to sew-on badge to hat, ninety percent discount. Alteration to sew-on hash marks, ninety percent discount. Alteration to sew-on chevrons, ninety percent discount. Alteration to embroider the name and rank on the right chest, forty percent discount. Alteration to embroider small logo on left chest, fifty percent. Alteration to heat press one-line non-reflective vinyl on back of garment, fifty percent discount. Alteration to heat press one-line reflective vinyl on back of garment, fifty percent discount. Alteration to heat press two-lines non-reflective vinyl on back of garment, twenty-five percent discount. Alteration to heat press two-lines reflective vinyl on back of garment, twenty-five percent discount. Alteration to sew patch, ninety percent discount. And we have two optional items, one of which is the Safari Duty gear and that is thirty percent discount. And then the Safari body, Safari Land Body Armor is fifty-one percent discount. And that's all of our discounts. So those are the discounts as Curtis Blue Line has offered us and the recommendation from the evaluation group is to accept these discounts.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
So it's Curtis Blue Line?
Yes.
So I move that we accepted twenty, uh, from Curtis Blue Line on bid twenty-five-zero-six-nine and rebid for the uniforms in the Ada County Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you. Our second item under today's unfinished business is the review of proposals received and award recommendation for goods and services, one hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it's for RFP two-five-zero-six-eight, the Ada County Elections Equipment Transport. And the evaluation team has completed the evaluation of the sole proposal submitted and would like to submit this letter with the evaluation team's recommendation.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. It's a letter dated August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFP two-five-zero-six-eight. Dear members of the board, due to the sole proposal submitted for RFP two-five-zero-six-eight for being over budget, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to reject the proposal submitted and direct the Clerk Auditor Recorder Office to procure the Elections Equipment Transport on the open market.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that proposal? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to reject all bids for RFP two-five-zero-six-eight, Ada County Elections Equipment Transport and submit for the open market.
Open market procurement.
Open market procurement.
I second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Our final item under unfinished business is the award, award recommendation of bid two-five-zero-seven-zero, the Ada County Victim Services Stair and Ramp Replacement and Courthouse Front Entry Stair Replacement, two thousand twenty-five. And we were prepared to come to you today with a award recommendation, but we received a protest yesterday from Optimum Bill Group in response to our recommendation to award letter that was sent out to our bidders. Therefore, we'd like to re-table the award recommendation to the September second, two thousand twenty-five, open business meeting for further consideration. And in the meantime, we will meet with you to discuss this protest that was submitted by Optimum.
Okay. Any other protests nowadays, huh?
It seems like we're getting more than our fair share.
Yeah. Okay, well, I would accept the motion to table the award of bid twenty-five-zero-seven-zero to nine-two.
I move that we table bid twenty-five-zero-seven-zero to the September second open business meeting to allow us to consider a protest.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thanks, Commissioners. Okay, now moving on to new business. We have a number of resolutions dealing with our budgets. I anticipate that our clerk is ready to explain them.
I am, Mr. Chair. Prior to you opening the public hearing for the first resolution, I'll read, well, actually, let's, let's open the hearing for the public resolution and then I'll read a statement and it'll be off to the board to.
Okay.
Do their thing.
Well, thank you. I will open the public hearing on resolution number three-one-one-four, resolution to adopt the Ada County budget for all county funds for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six. The hearing being opened, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, pursuant to Idaho Code thirty-one sixteen oh four and sixteen oh five, the tentative budget was published on August twelfth, which included notices of this public hearing. Upon the conclusion of the public hearing, the Commissioners shall determine the amount of the budget, which shall not be greater than the published tentative budget and by resolution shall adopt the budget for the ensuing fiscal year. And now it's over to you, Mr. Chair, for motions and adoption and resolutions.
Okay, we adopted the tentative budget on the twelfth of August and this resolution does not include any increases at all because that would be against the law. So this is exactly what the, what the tentative budget was set. And I might add that the tentative budget, when we adopted that, it was approximately one point eight million dollars less than last year's budget. Is that not correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
And part of that, part of that budget, from what I understand from the, from the clerk's office, is part of the reason that we had to do some of the things we had to do is because our revenue sharing was down. How much was our revenue sharing down for the last two years?
We would have anticipated another ten to eleven million dollars in revenue sharing from the state had it remained the same increases over the previous two decades.
For the last two years?
The last two years.
Okay. Well, I think that needs to be noted, that the legislature, they alter that formula. It's not that the revenue was actually down for the state during those year, during the last two years. Revenue was up, but the formula was altered to where the county and other local governments are getting less money from the revenue sharing portion. So which, which then has, causes a corollary increase in the property tax budget. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Isn't that about where we make, where we have to make it up? And we still had a one point eight million dollar reduction in our budget from the year before. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other comments?
And another note, our number of employees per ten thousand has gone down as well. This is, this is, this is a good budget in terms of the money we have available, limiting the tax on our people in terms of property tax. Again, another note, ninety percent of, again, correct me if I'm wrong on this figure, but approximately ninety percent of our money that we spend is to fill mandates, the requirements of the law and the legislature and the constitution that we have to do.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct. Okay. And, and a part of that, by the way, is, is that we are required to, we don't. The state of Idaho is not fulfilling their obligations relative to our jail because there is a court order and the law says that once a prisoner is sentenced, they are to be removed from our jail and taken out to the Idaho Department of Corrections. They don't do that. We have from anywhere from forty to a hundred and fifty state prisoners. And according to the Sheriff's Association, that costs a hundred and forty-seven dollars a day for those prisoners and the state pays the county seventy-five dollars. That has to be made up with property taxes. Another area that is, that the state doesn't follow the law, clearly because the law is a little deficient there, is on parole violators. If there's a parole violator picked up, they're put in our jail and unless they are pending another charge, they should be taken out to I-Doc. But they're, because if they're, if they're, if there's another charge they're pending, then they need to be in our jail waiting for trial. But those two items cost us a lot of money and yet we are still able to, to keep up with our, with labor force. We pay our deputies right at the market or above the market, in my view. Would I be correct in saying that, Mr. Clerk?
Based off the HR recommendations, this is the last budget hearing. They're, they're within the realm of market for this area.
Well, I, I think so and I'm, and I'm happy to do it. We need to make sure that our, that our deputies are, because it costs more to train, to train deputy if they decide they want to go on to another area. So it's better to keep them, to keep paid sufficiently and I think we, I think we do that. Any other comments on, on the, on fiscal, on resolution thirty-one fourteen, Mr. Chair? Yeah, go ahead.
I'll, I'll recognize we did receive some input from the public related to the budget, although admittedly it came very late in the process when, when the budget process was closer to the conclusion than beginning. For, for the future, if the public does want to be engaged in the budget process, it's always best to do it early where your issues might have a better hearing. But some of the concerns were related to employee pay for the sheriff's office and then just general criticism of the raising, the percentage that, that we took. I think, I mean, I'm satisfied with the budget. We, we reviewed pretty much every area there was to cut and really the only thing to cut, I think at this point, would be employees' pay raises, which obviously we've had a lot of discussions about the pros and cons of giving employees pay raises versus not. And obviously you could save some money that way, but then you have to factor that against, you know, the chairman was talking about employee retention, employees going to, leaving Ada County for other jurisdictions who are paying better. We have to remain competitive with the other cities and surrounding counties because it does cost so much more to, to train a new employee than to hire a new one. But again, we do appreciate the public staying engaged in this and certainly would invite the public to participate. And again, go over the budget, if you, like, as we did, as the clerk's office does, to look for specific items that could be cut or reformed. We certainly invite them to. And of course, employee pay is, is a debate that every single government agency, including the state, has to have every year. And I think we did, we did good for our employees this year and, but again, the debate has to come up next year as well. So thanks to the clerk for all the help you've given us in this process here.
Well, and it should be noted that when you and I first were elected to this position, the turnover rate in Ada County was pretty high. And we reduced that, which actually reduce our, reduces our expenses because we don't have to hire as many new people because we're keeping them well-paid, keeping them within the market certainly. Is there any other discussion on?
Just, again, since the employee situation is, is raised, we, we do a, a market analysis and our HR helps us do that. And we, we keep our, our employees at a fair market analysis and compensate them appropriately for that. And so I think that's, that's important to note as well. It's, it's not just done in the vacuum. We actually do an analysis of where we are, what's, what's good. And the other thing I would note, our, our employees do good work for us, whether it's procurement who helps us save on contracting or wherever. Our employees work hard to help us because they're taxpayers too and they help us keep the budget under control as well. So thank, thanks to them as well.
Of course, we have a, we have, we have good public servants that work in Ada County and we're thankful for each one of them.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I'll also point out for the record, we had requests from a lot of departments to hire a lot more positions in Ada County, which were rejected during the budget deliberations as we analyzed that. So again, that's helping to keep our costs down by, you know, really scrutinizing every request for a new position to be added to Ada County.
Well, and as noted further earlier, our, our number of employees per, per thousand population has decreased and that's good. We're doing, because our population's increased, fifty-three thousand roughly over the last four, four years, four years or so. And inflation has, has also been, been a, been a factor and we've been able to withstand the inflation. If you accumulate the inflation for the last five years, what's it been, about twenty-four percent? That's, that's inflation, that's cumulative. That's, that's a lot. That means we have to pay more for everything. And yet we're still able to, to reduce our budget by one point eight million dollars. I think we owe a lot. Thanks for the, your staff for helping us put that together. Okay, is there any more discussion?
Just one more, one more comment. Clerk can comment. What, what was the survey that you, in terms of the state and, and survey in terms of places to work this year?
The one that we participated in. We came in the top ten, again, best places to work.
That says, says it as well, in terms of.
Kind of employees we have.
Absolutely. And we want to keep them.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing on resolution number three-one-one-four. Is there further discussion on the adoption of the resolution?
Mr. Chair, does the resolution need to be read prior to the motion?
Well, we can if you'd like to read it.
I'm prepared to read it.
Okay, let's read the resolution then.
I move to adopt resolution three-one-one-four, which as provided by Idaho Code thirty-one, one-six-zero-four and one-six-zero-five, sets the budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, totally three hundred and fifty-five million, one hundred and one thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars in appropriations, to include a hundred and seventy-one million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars in property tax and a hundred and eighty-four million, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars in non-property tax revenues. And by the detail attached, which will be attached, reflects the amounts allocated to each department and fund of the county.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I believe it might have been read incorrectly, a hundred and seventy million instead of a hundred and seventy-one.
Hundred and seventy, yeah.
Just making sure that was.
It's a hundred and seventy.
Hundred and seventy.
Did I read a hundred and seventy?
I thought you might have said a hundred and seventy-one, just wanted to make sure.
Well, we want to make sure we got it right.
It is a hundred and seventy million, a hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars in property tax.
In property taxes, all right. Well, we've had a discussion on that. The, the, the public hearing has been opened and closed and.
Got a second to the motion.
Got a motion, second to the motion to adopt the resolution thirty-one fourteen, which is our, our budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, which begins October first. Okay. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, we got a few more of these. They're little smaller ones, but they're nevertheless important. I'll open the public hearing on the adoption of resolution number three-one-one-five, the resolution for pest extermination, Ada County pests extermination. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Okay. Would you like to read the resolution?
I can read it, Ryan can read it.
He's got one?
Got one.
All right, let's go. I will close the public hearing on resolution three-one-one-five. Go ahead, if you, if you have a motion.
I'll just point out first, it was a public hearing, but I, I don't see any member of the public here to testify on these. But I'll move to adopt resolution number three-one-one-five, which as provided by Idaho Code section thirty-one dash sixteen oh four and sixteen oh five. which, as provided by Idaho Code section thirty-one dash sixteen oh four and sixteen oh five, sets the budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, totaling one million, four hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars in appropriation, to include eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars in property taxes and five hundred and sixty-three thousand, sixty-seven dollars in non-property tax revenues. And by the detail attached, reflects the amount allotted to the Pest Extermination District.
I second the motion and note for the public as well that the non-property tax revenue includes several things from the state and other places. So that, that should be noted in terms of the public noting that a, a good portion of our budgets are non-property tax money as well. So I'll second the motion.
Okay. Okay, I, you've heard the motion, it's been moved, seconded, is there further discussion? Hearing done, the, the motion is to adopt Resolution number three-one-one-five. All in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution three-one-one-six, a resolution to adopt the mosquito abatement budget, district budget for F Y twenty-six. Is there any further discussion on the mosquito abatement district?
Just, just as a note there, we, people are, don't focus on this a lot, but if you hear in the news the virus that's going around, mosquito, and there's a new virus that's mosquito vectored as well. And this is one thing that helps the county protect the citizens of Ada County. People don't focus on it, but it's an important part of our community.
They start focusing on it when they have mosquitoes in their backyard.
Our West Nile virus.
Our West Nile, yeah, well.
Comes to their family.
Fortunately, we can keep that down as well. All right, I'll accept a motion on Resolution number three. I'll close our public hearing on Resolution thirty-one sixteen and accept a motion to adopt the, the resolution.
I move to adopt Resolution three-one-one-six, which, as provided by Idaho Code thirty-one, sixteen oh four and sixteen oh five, sets budgets for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six, totaling two million, three hundred and six thousand, fifteen dollars in appropriations, to include one million, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars in property tax and six hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars in non-property tax revenues. And by the detail attached, reflects the amounts allocated to the mosquito abatement district. And the, what we say attached, people can go to the public record and see that if they want to see the, what I was referring to and, or we refer to in those motions.
That's right. Well, you can go to the, to our website and look at any detail of our budget. Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the Resolution number thirty-one. Wait a minute, I, I closed that, yeah. To adopt Resolution number thirty-one sixteen, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Actually, I have, I'll open the public hearing on adoption of Resolution number thirty-one seventeen, Resolution to reserve for gun taxes. I'm going to ask the clerk to explain that.
Yes, Mr. Chair, because this board decided not to take all of the available increase in property taxes, these are just being reserved for future years if necessary. So we, what's that?
Do we need a resolution?
Yes, you do need a resolution to do that.
That was a change because at, at one point in time, it was automatic.
It's automatic.
Resolute, then the legislature said, well, you got to do a resolution if you want to do it. So we'd have to do a resolution now. And then it's limited on how it can be spent in the future as well. So, and what is that amount?
It's a one hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Okay, well, let's not just park a change. Okay. Is there any further discussion on the adoption of the resolution? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution number thirty-one seventeen and call for a motion.
Do we get, need to reference the code?
You can either move to adopt it or read the resolution and then vote on it.
Okay, so I move that the, well, we can read the all whereas, we don't have to read all whereas. The county.
What's that?
Just the time is fine.
A resolution of the Board of County Commissioners reserving the for gun amount for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six for potential use in subsequent tax years, as described in Idaho Code sixty-three, eight oh two, at the amount of one hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Is that sufficient?
Yep.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the, you've heard the, the motion and the resolution to, to reserve some funds for the for gun taxes for fiscal year twenty-six. All in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. All right, now moving on, we have a couple more resolutions. The Resolution Adjusting the Ada County Budget for Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-five to reflect the use of fund balance for solid waste. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution thirty-one nineteen. Any questions or discussions on Resolution thirty-one nineteen? Yeah, Herb, do you want to explain that to us?
Sure. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Resolution number three-one-one-nine, adjustment to the Ada County Solid Waste Budget is to help add additional funds or utilize the enterprise funds to cover the cost for the additional leachate that had to be hauled offsite. This last winter, we encountered additional six million gallons of material or liquids that had to be processed. As a result of that, our leachate ponds hit capacity, therefore requiring us to haul off leachate to a third-party facility. We incurred roughly about almost two-point-eight million dollars in cost. We're asking for two million, five hundred and eighty-two thousand and five hundred and eighty-one dollars to adjust in our budget, utilizing the enterprise funds to cover the cost.
And I might add that the, the contractor to do that was a subsidiary of Republic Services, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, any questions?
Just for the public, you might want to explain what leachate is in terms of what we have to do.
Yes.
Because this is a requirement that we have to do for, for water.
That is correct, so. Leachate is a liquid, essentially, we call it landfill juice. So as we receive rain, stormwater on site, some of that water is shed off into basins, which is clean, non-contact water. Then we have what's called contact water, which is water that soaks into the trash and then ultimately is collected, collected into ponds or sumps. That liquid at some point has to be either evaporated or hauled offsite. So our ponds have roughly twelve million gallons in capacity. We were close to exceeding that capacity, therefore we had to haul off to ensure we protect health and safety.
I guess that, that's the main thing, is that, that we're, we're doing our due diligence to protect the water quality of Ada County.
Yes, and one of the things that we're doing as a follow-up, I did spend some time looking at the original basis of design documents for the N R C or the North Ravine Cell. Those documents were created in two thousand and five, looking at the information that was used to facilitate the modeling for leachate generation. They seem to be a bit low to what we're seeing in real time. So our engineer record, Jacobs Engineering is relooking at those figures and updating those models accordingly to help us address the volumes of leachate that we're currently seeing today.
Yes, go ahead.
And one more thing, this two million dollars is not coming from taxpayers, or property tax, correct?
That is correct, it is coming from the enterprise fund. Essentially, we're using the revenue that we collect from the gate fee at the landfill to cover these costs.
So, because we just did our other budgets, but this is the kind of stuff I was talking about when we talked about property tax versus other fund. You are an enterprise fund which doesn't take any tax dollars, correct?
Yes, sir, you are correct, thank you.
So people understand that they're listening, you're listening to all of our conversations.
Fully self-sustaining and, and other counties, some of our counties actually charge property taxes for the operation of their landfill in addition to tipping fees. So we're lucky that we don't, we don't do that here.
Yes, sir.
So people use the service, pay for the services. And, and that's good. And that's a requirement, by the way, of the, of the federal government, to keep that leachate down to a certain level.
That is correct.
Yes. All right. Any other questions or issues on the adoption of the resolution? Okay, I will close the public hearing on Resolution three-one-nineteen and call for a motion.
I'll move to adopt Resolution number three-one-one-nine, as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing done, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Oh, no, this one's a good one, here, the next one, I'll.
You definitely.
I like, I like this one.
I stick around here for a little while.
I like this one. Resolution three-one-twenty, a resolution designating the Director of Solid Waste Management as a responsible corporate officer, authorizing the Director of Solid Waste Management to sign, deliver, and submit on behalf of the county all documentation, materials, and information as may be required to the United States Environmental Protection Agency, forty CFR parts eighty and ten ninety, and providing an effective date. And I have been doing that, and it's, and it's been sort of cumbersome. And I'm, I'm glad you can do it now.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Resolution number three-one-two-zero is to help us, in effort as part of our R and G or renewable gas to pipeline project that was recently commissioned in May of this year, where the county is selling gas to a third-party operator. That operator will take that gas, clean and scrub it to pipeline quality grade, and then put it into the pipeline, into the intermountain gas pipeline, I should say. So that gas is then sold to intermountain gas. We receive royalties from that gas being sold. We anticipate to receive roughly about a million dollars per year of that gas being sold into the pipeline, pipeline, which also helps us offset our fees at the landfill gates, gate rates, I should say. As part of that process, the E P requires the county to verify the gas going to the developer's facility is renewable gas, therefore requiring us to certify monthly that the gas is of that quality or grade. Originally, we weren't anticipating this much involvement in this process, but the E P A did have some additional requirements for us to facilitate that process. So we have to certify the gas is of renewable gas going into the R and G facility. So therefore, this resolution will authorize me to certify that gas is of the appropriate quality.
And I've been doing that, getting it set up, and it's, it's rather cumbersome dealing with a, with the Environmental Protection Agency.
That is correct.
But, so, and you, so you, last time you were environmental officer, you, and you had to come up here and go, go through it. But we did, we got it accomplished. Now this, now you're going to be able to do it at your office, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right, good enough, yes.
Just as, as another note, this certification then gives us credits for doing renewable energy rather than pulling it out of the ground for other energy. So there, if there's, there are two advantages for doing this.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion or question on, on the, on the adoption of the resolution? Hearing done, I will close the public hearing on Resolution thirty-one-twenty and call for a motion.
I move to approve Resolution thirty-one-twenty as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Bob?
Yes, back again.
Back again. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have a couple items under our open business and, or new business, I should say. The first of which is opening a bid two-five-zero-seven-four, the Ada County Sheriff's Office Outdoor Pave Storage Improvements twenty-twenty-five. And we received seven responses for this project. So Alice has our bonfire all queued up, if you're ready for us to open.
We're ready. Open bonfire.
So, Mr. Chair, today we'll be looking at the name of the bidder and the total bid amount, which will be inclusive of the base bid and a twenty-thousand-dollar owner's contingency.
Okay.
The spreadsheet will be coming up here in just a second. All right. So our, our first contractor is Asa Construction LLC, and they have a total bid amount of five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Our second bidder is Barrier Building, and they have a total bid amount of three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. My bidder number three is Blue, Blue Sky Construction with a total bid amount of four hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. My bidder number four is Brycon Incorporated with a total bid amount of three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. My bidder number five is Knife River Corporation with a total bid amount of three hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. My bidder number six, Pacific Source Construction with a total bid amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And bidder number seven, Sunny Ridge Construction LLC with a bid of two hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. So those are our seven bidders, and our evaluation team will need a little time to evaluate these bids. So we'd like to request that this be tableed for award to the September second, two thousand twenty-five Open Business Meeting.
Okay. Thank you, is there any questions before we accept the motion? I accept the motion to table the bid.
I'll move to table the award of bid two-five-zero-seven-four to September second, twenty-twenty-five.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Our second item under new business is the review of bids received and award recommendation for goods and services, one hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that is for bid two-five-zero-seven-five, the Ada County Weed Pest Mosquito Abatement U A S purchase. And we received two responses for bid two-five-zero-seven-five, and we would like to submit this letter of the bids received and award recommendation for your consideration.
Okay, go ahead.
The letter is dated August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two-five-zero-seven-five. Dear members of the board, Ada County Procurement received two responses for bid two-five-zero-seven-five. The following are the names of the bidders and the bid amounts submitted. My bidder number one is Frontier Precision, and they had a total bid amount of one hundred and one thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. And bidder number two is Leading Edge Aerial Technologies Incorporated with a total bid amount of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. After reviewing the bids submitted, it's a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the purchase order to Leading Edge Aerial Technologies Incorporated as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-five cents.
Okay, any questions? Any questions or discussion? I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve bid two-five-zero-seven-five to Leading Edge Aerial Technologies Incorporated in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-five cents.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, we have with us our distinguished clerk, Mr. Trent Triple.
Hey, Mr. Chair, a couple updates from our office last week, we.
Yeah, pretty busy office.
We had six individuals from Elections graduate from a national certification, which was a big deal for us. They've been working on this for two years. And so it was nice to see them recognized for their hard work, taking various classes, working with Elections officials across the country to learn about Elections Administration and how to do it correctly, which we've done for a long time here in Idaho. So that was a great win for our office. We also have a filing window closing here at the end of this week. So I just wanted to make people aware, on this November's ballot, we have municipal offices, mostly council seats in Boise, Meridian Star, Eagle, Kuna, and Garden City, as well as cemetery districts, fire protection districts, a recreation district. And then obviously, the school board trustees are going to be on there with a few bond and levy questions as well. So all of those filings need to be into our office by five P M. this Friday, if they're going to appear on the ballot for the upcoming November election. So that's an important date for people to remember.
There's one mayor up too, I believe.
There's one mayor in Garden City that is up, that's correct.
All right. Any questions of our clerk? Well, we got him here.
Just your question as far as the.
Just a question as far as the certification, the national certification, uh, is it a national organization certi- who does the certification?
Uh, the Elections Center is a national organization, uh, that puts on these classes. Uh, you have to take twelve classes over a two-year period, uh, everywhere from, uh, financing to, uh, security and, um, the history of elections and all the different things that have gone through over the last couple of years have, have really ramped up the importance of having people well-educated and trained on how to administer elections. So we felt this was pretty important for us to continue our, our, uh, example of, um, setting, uh, good elections here in Ada County for the rest of the state, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so, because we, we in Elections are kind of on the vanguard on several things. Are we going to be, are we or going to, going to be included in that? Hope for re-education for, for other states?
Um, we are called on often in Ada County to, uh, help other people understand how to run elections. Um, we, we actually got to the point where the last two years, SARAH, the organization that does this training, actually moved their classes to Boise, uh, so that they could, um, uh, show them our Elections, uh, operations here. Uh, they recently saw the remodel and that then asked us to brief, um, how we had a good relationship with our commissioners and how we were able to get, uh, our Elections facility upgraded. Uh, there's a lot of jurisdictions lost across the country that do not have the same support. So, um, this last week, we actually briefed that, uh, to the national audience on how you go about, um, making sure you have proper facilities that run elections. So, um, there's a lot of interaction between Ada County and this national organization.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. I, I think we are an example, and, uh, I'm glad that we're helping other people, not only in Idaho, but nationally.
For sure.
Well, I saw the pictures. Congratulations.
Thank you.
To your staff. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, uh, we have a claims journal to authorize. I'll accept a motion on the claims journal.
I move to approve the claims journal updated August twenty-second, twenty twenty-five and authorize payment.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have personnel actions. Uh, these are interim, uh, adjustments to pay. Uh, a couple of grade step, a couple of grade step progressions, uh, two conditional pay increases, uh, for greater ladder change, and one interim recruitment and one job reclassification. Is there any question or discussion on the personnel actions? None, I'll, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to, um, approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
I'm taking the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, Brad, we have, we have, uh, our assessor's office with us. Go ahead.
Yes, Chairman, Commissioners. Sorry, I wasn't here last year. I was at the Assessor's Conference over in Twin Falls, so which was very informative, got lots of new information. And, um, overall, our office is doing really good. We, uh, just tallied up the final Board of Tax Appeals because the deadline for that was last week, and we have fifty-one appeals, which is a lot lower than in the past. Last couple of years, we've been over a hundred appeals for Board of Tax Appeals, so we're pretty excited that's coming down.
How many of those fifty are commercial?
The majority of them.
Majority of them, yeah.
Yeah, so I want to say it's probably eighty to ninety percent are commercial properties, so. And there is, of those, if you break it down to unique owners, I mean, a lot of those are ten or fifteen parcels, uh, grouping, so we'd probably only have about fifteen appellants, individual, unique appellants, if you broke it down from that perspective.
Okay. Enter, at your discussion and, uh, your conference in Twin Falls, was the State Tax Commission there?
Yes, and they did address CAMA software.
Yes, we're, I'm talking, wondering about, did they address the CAMA software?
Yeah, that's pretty much how the conference started off. Uh, two commissioners were there to announce, and they did bring bad news for the statewide CAMA system. So, as you're aware, they put in for a budget request for the twenty twenty-seven budget, and, uh, they were asked to withdraw that request, obviously with the three percent of us.
Holdback.
Holdback, three percent. So, uh, we're very appreciative that, uh, you all are supporting our CAMA system and looking at how far out the statewide CAMA system could be. Um, I mean, they're expecting it could take a couple of years to get this through. Um, and we're already in the twenty twenty-seven budget, so, and that's a three to five-year implementation for that. So, I mean, for Ada County to see new software, I mean, you're talking seven to ten years, I mean, for it to completely go through. Uh, things could fast-track, but it doesn't, it didn't start out very favorable for them. We are, um, I did talk to, um, one of the commissioners yesterday. We are inviting them to our RFP process. So we do have, I believe, four names from the State Tax Commission who will be involved in the RFP process as a non-voting, so they'll have the right to kind of see how things going through.
Well, it seems as though that, uh, county is able to implement new software. The state's still struggling with LUMA. And so, I can't think of a software implementation that has gone well with the state. Am I wrong? I don't know. I mean, if there is, I mean, we've had a couple of, you know, your office had a couple a few years ago with the, with the ITD.
True. So, it works pretty good now, but at the beginning.
Works good now.
It was pretty clunky in their implementation, but it is a good software now, and we're, we're just very appreciative of the support.
Sure.
To be able to proceed down this road and to be able to work with the state.
Well, it's good.
We're hoping if both sides do their due diligence, that we'll both end up with the same CAMA, you know, property tax provider in the end, and there can be some savings found then.
And if we can help the state in their statewide implementation, that'd be good too.
Exactly.
Yeah. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a que- in, in relation to what you just said, is the state now kind of committed to not, not necessarily as, as they, if they ever move forward, that they don't create something that we have to retool? Uh, are they kind of looking for, uh, at, at, at our model that can, they can kind of use for small counties, large counties?
I'm not sure what their, what their motivation is.
If they're pledged to even just work with us so that they don't just create something totally different that we have to try and figure out.
I, I believe both sides want to work with each other and find software that's compatible. Um, it's just, um, yeah, it's kind of clunky when you have forty-four counties and then this, you know, forty-five total, if you're looking at the state being their own entity, trying to find, uh, commonality through that. And this isn't their first time trying to do a statewide implementation. And I believe in the past, they were able to only get about seven or eight counties involved in it in the past. So we'll see how it goes. It's, it's hard to say. Right now, we're just, uh, really focusing on our, RFP, and we feel like we have really good support with our consultant and procurement, and, uh, we're looking forward to that journey.
Okay.
In regards to tax cancellations, uh, we are at that point where property roll has closed, where we sent out the bulk of our assessment notices, and the home state exemption, we still approve that, non-prorated, uh, with no deadline for this year. So these are going to continue to come through, uh, every week. We'll probably have a handful this year. Uh, looks like we have about sixty-two in total for both property roll and, uh, going back a couple of years.
Okay. All right, any questions on any of the, uh, tax cancellations, which are not really cancellations, they're adjustments, but code calls are cancellations and so on. Any questions on any of these? Yeah.
It's confusing to people because.
Yep. All right. I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the tax cancellations as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next up, we have our distinguished treasurer with us, Mr. Bob. Thank you for being here.
My pleasure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Just as follow-up to Brad's comments, I do want to thank you for your support with the property tax, um, appraisal or assessment and taxation software. Just to emphasize how important it is, all these tax adjustments just approved, these all depend on reliable tax software to process. Um, and it's pretty far-reaching when you think about this software because it impacts all of the taxing districts that we collect for a- and every property taxpayer, um, anyone who has an exemption, the balances in their escrow accounts, um, it's very far-reaching. So again, thank you for your support. Uh, we look forward to working with the state and the assessor's office and coming up with a, a solution. Um, other than that, no new business from the treasurer's office today.
Okay. Well, good. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then, um, next up, we have the approval of the minutes. I'll accept the motion on the approval of the minutes for, uh, August the twelfth.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'm taking the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Next up, we have, uh, a change order, change order number two, the Ada County Jail Chiller, an air handler replacement, a decrease of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Must mean the project's complete.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. We wrapped it up, and, uh, that's the savings on the project, just returning it to the budget.
All right. Well, good. I'll accept a, uh, a motion on change order number two to agreement number three, uh, one sixty-one.
Mr. Chairman, this is just a, a note before I make the motion, that this is what I was talking about when, when I was talking about our budget.
Yep.
The kind of thing that our employees help us do, is save money and return to the budget. So I, I move to, uh, approve change order number two to agreement number three zero one six one, uh, as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have Parks and Waterways. We have one agreement for the Barber Park and Education and Event Center. I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'm taking the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, now we have a number of agreements. These are primarily renewal agreements. There's thirty-six of them. Uh, there's one new one, and that's, uh, for a lease for the, the sheriff for their new training center. That's a quite a substantial lease, but I wanted to make that, that known as well. Is there any questions or discussion on any of these thirty-six agreements?
Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, just as a, uh, we do have rental agreements with, uh, as noted here with the IRS to use our training facility, either Department of Parks and Station use our facility. That's part of that agreement you're talking about as far as the, uh, agreement for the training facility. And with the note that we are also looking, we are exploring options of having, uh, uh, something that's a brighter, a broader vision of training facility for, um, it, for the entire area.
For all law enforcement.
For all law enforcement in Treasure Valley.
Because right now, we have four training facilities in the county to, to train law enforcement. It seems as though we could possibly do it with one.
Right, and, uh, and, and the state facility is closing, so we're, we're.
Well, that's the fourth one.
We're, we're, we're still operating.
We're exploring, uh, uh, options.
Absolutely. And I think we'll get, that's something to take, it'll take some time to get that accomplished, but that's something we're, we're working towards.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, we need to note on agree, on, on, on item number twenty-one, there are some specific things we need to note on that agreement too when we go through the motions.
Okay. All right. Well, any other discussion? If you'd like to note right now before we make the motion then.
Okay, on, on agreement number one four two six four dash six dash two four, that's an agreement between Ada County and one su- support for the health disc management in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, those three things needed to be noted in, in that agreement.
Yep. Okay, any other questions? Uh, again, most of these agreements are renewals. They're, they're agreements that we have already agreed in the past, and, uh, because of the way our budget works, everything terminates on September, end of September thirtieth. So these are renewals to renew, renew them for the next year. Any other questions or discussion?
Well, just one, one more thing. Number twenty-nine, that's the food, food services for the Ada County Jail. That, that is very specific. We have to do very precise things in their, uh, the things that they eat at the jail. Uh, and, uh, so we contracted somebody to help us do that, I guess. Make sure the nutrition's proper and.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the thirty, thirty-six agreement as we discussed, uh, as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now we have indigent services, the weekly indigent items. Is there any question, discussion on the weekly indigent items? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to accept the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on some of the cases dated, um, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'm taking the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Before we close, is there any other, uh, business needs to be brought before the board today? Hearing none, or adjourned? Thank you. Well.
Yeah, actually, that's why I want to see you.
Well, you want to see you.
I want to see you.
You don't want to see you, but when you do need you, you want to see you.
That's, that's right.
Exactly.
You're on the record.
Well, good morning. Today is the twenty-sixth day of August. Uh, the time is, uh, ten oh five. Uh, the board is in session acting as the Board of County Emergency Medical Services District for its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. We also have with us today.
John Lake Paramedics.
Sean Rain Paramedics.
Trent Triple County Clerk.
Tim Sturgis Clerk's office.
Cody Starman Clerk's office.
And then we have IT guy. Okay, uh, are there any changes to the agenda, Madam Kirk?
There are not.
No changes. Okay, the first item up on our, uh, on our agenda is, uh, a resolution adopting your budget. So, uh, I will open the public hearing on resolution number thirty-one eighteen. Mr. Clerk, can you give us a, a recitation of, of that budget?
You bet. Sir, per cent, Idaho Code thirty-one sixteen oh four and sixteen oh five, the tentative budget was published on August twelfth, which included notice of this public hearing. Upon the conclusion of the public hearing, the commissioner shall determine the amount of the budget, which shall not be greater than the published tentative budget, and by resolution, shall adopt the budget for the ensuing fiscal year. In front of you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, is resolution three one one eight, and, uh, those numbers, uh, that you had before you are the ones that are, uh, set for the tentative budget for you to adopt today as the final budget.
And we didn't increase it any.
We did not.
So we follow the law explicitly.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, I'll close the public hearing on resolution thirty-one eighteen and, uh, call for a motion.
I move to adopt resolution three one one eight, which as provided by Idaho Code thirty-one sixteen oh four and sixteen oh five, sets the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, totaling thirty million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars in appropriations, to include nine million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, seventy million, thirty-five dollars in property tax and twenty million, nine hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars in non-property tax revenues, and by the detail attached reflects the amounts allocated to the Emergency Medical Services District.
Okay.
Um, and again, again, note just in my, in my motion, the majority is non-property tax revenue, so. There is property tax revenue there, but a substantial amount is revenue generated by the services provided.
Well, good enough. I did close that public hearing, did I not? Yes, I did, and the motion's been made. Has it been seconded? Well, good enough. I did close that public hearing, did I not? Yes, I did, and the motion's been made. Has it been seconded?
Second.
Okay, you've heard us, you've heard, there's been a motion and a mo, and a second of the motion to adopt the resolution thirty-one eighteen, which is resolution to adopt the budget for the Ada County, Ada County Medical Services District. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Got a budget.
Spend wisely.
You've got a budget. Okay, moving on, we have claims journal. Is there any question or discussion of any of the claims journal? Hearing none, I would accept a motion.
I'll move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'm taking the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, next, we have the approval of the minute of the August twelfth meeting. Is there any question or discussion on any of the approval of the minutes? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the E M S, uh, minutes dated eighth August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. We have eight agreements. Any question or discussion on any of the agreements that are, that are in front of the board? Some of them are renewal, some of them are tendons to certain things. Any question on any of the eight agreements? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the agreements as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'm taking the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have our E M S update.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Did you have a good time at the fair?
Yeah, it was, uh, it was, it was a good week. Um, we had an employee this year that put together a, a program to, uh, teach people about helmet safety. And it was something that, that, his name is Ryland Willis, and he took this on himself and, and built this project. Uh, and it was a, a, a pretty neat thing that we've not done down there before. And they, they, you know, were focused on, on kids and getting them to wear helmets while riding a scooter or their bicycle or anything like that. So that was a, a new project this year. Um, but it was, uh, it was a good fair. So, uh, now we're on to football season.
When's your first football game?
Uh, I can't remember what the date's coming up, uh, first week of September, the first home game.
Is that that Appalachian State?
I think so.
Yeah, great. Great. Do we have to wear a helmet?
Uh, only if you want to.
Did you have anything to add, John?
John? No, I don't. I think, uh, uh, last I saw, and only because of the entertaining value out of it, uh, we're getting ready for the, the first new, newly painted annual.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, well, you're gonna, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a, an unveiling, like a sheet you're pulling down from it or anything.
I'd really like, I'd like to.
We have to find a really big sheet.
It has to be a big sheet. Yeah, yeah. Alright, well, anything else you want to give us enough to dig on?
Yes, sir.
Hey, well, thank you. Now, your employees, we appreciate their efforts.
Okay, will do.
Can I say, yes, I know, I, I stopped, I, I just watched some of that training. It wasn't very engaging for the kids.
Yeah, yeah.
And they enjoyed it.
Right. Yeah, I was really impressed with what Ryland did together.
Well, good, well, good. Well, thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you.